2022-18 Will King Station.
This is a coastal area and standard cluster subdivision to divide 29.1 acres plus or minus into 58 single-family lots to be located on certain parcels of land lying and being in India River 100 Sussex County. The properties are lying on the west side of Will King Road, which is Sussex County Route 288, approximately 1.01 miles south of Kendale Road, which is Sussex County Route 287. The tax parcel ID is District 234 MAP 6, Parcels 26.00 and 59.19. The zoning district is GR, General Residential District, and AR1 Agricultural Residential District. Submitted into the record, Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of the applicant's preliminary subdivision plan, a copy of the applicant's exhibit booklet, which includes the Chapter 99-9C response, we have a copy of the applicant's environmental assessment, we have a copy of the plus comments from the State Planning Office, we have a copy of the staff review letter, we have a copy of a letter from Sussex County Engineering Department Utility Planning Division, we have a copy of a letter that's been received from Del Dot. We also have the watershed eco letter submitted upon the applicant, which was submitted on July 25th. We have the applicant's response to the staff review letter. We also have the TAC review letters, including the Department of Agriculture, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Fire Marshal's Office, County Engineering, Delaware Electric Co-op, the Division of Public Health, the Division of Public Watershed Stewardship, and I would note that we have received 21 written comments. Some of those comments were received today, Mr. Chairman, and they have been printed and included on your desk. So, thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Mr. Hutt.
And while Mr. Hutt's coming up there, too, those new items, they'll also be on the online docket.
They will.
Yeah, probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Whaley, members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Whitehouse and staff, and of course, Mr. Robertson. I guess I'll begin, obviously introduce myself. I'm David Hutt with Morris James, a local attorney here in Georgetown. It's the first time I've had the privilege of presenting an application in front of Mr. Collins and Mr. Butler. So, welcome to the Planning Commission. I'll get to spend a few Thursday nights with you, I think, over the next few years. I'm looking forward to it. This afternoon, I'm representing Will King Station LLC, which is the applicant for the application that was just introduced by Mr. Whitehouse. With me this afternoon, sitting right next to me a moment ago was Webb Gray, a principal of the applicant. Sitting next to him is Chris Pfeifer, a professional engineer with George Miles and Buhr. Sitting in the back is Drew Boyce, making sure he arrived, a professional engineer with Century Engineering. And certainly, if you have questions related to traffic or Will King Road in specific, Mr. Boyce would be here to address those. The property likely needs no introduction, but it is located along Will King Road. You can see on the screens around the room, Will King Road is the road that is underneath the cursor. In that regard, Will King Road begins at Kendale Road, which is right underneath the cursor there, and of course, ends down at Conley's Chapel Road, here at the sort of the bottom of the screens. As you can see, just by looking at this aerial photography for Will King Road and of course, the surrounding area, this is a very rural and residential area of the county with a number of subdivisions that already exist in this area. Real quickly, I'll just start down where the cursor is, at Conley's Chapel Road, and of course, you have Conley Chapel Village on the same side as the proposed Will King Station community. Moving a little bit north on that, of course, you can see the Oakwood Village at Lewis. If you go to the other side of Will King Road, there is Tallgrass Estates. A little bit north of that is Chapel Green. As you move further north on Will King Road, there are some older subdivisions like Arbery Park and BB Farms. To the right or east of Will King Road, you of course have Coral Lakes, also known as Coral Crossing, and its name may have changed again, but that is in this area right here. And of course, there is Tanager Woods in that same area. If we look at the area immediately adjacent to this proposed project on Will King Station, you of course have Oak Crest Farms right underneath the cursor, staying on that side of Beaver Dam Road. There is also a community that's currently under construction known as Anchors Run. If you switch to the other side of Beaver Dam Road, you have Heron Bay, Oak Crest Pond, the writings at Rehoboth, Ocean Meadows, Cardinal Grove. Again, that's just identifying the residential communities that exist within close, very close proximity to Will King Station. As introduced by Mr. Whitehouse a moment ago, this application is comprised of two tax parcels consisting of a six-acre parcel and a 23-acre parcel. The math on that, although I'm not an engineer, it means that there's a combined acreage here this afternoon of 29 acres between those two parcels. The property is unique in some respects as it has a split designation on both the, on both the tax map as well as, or I'm sorry, on the future land use map as well as the zoning map. The zoning map is the second image on the screen, and the lighter shade of brown that's there represents the county's GR or General Residential District. As you can see, the front portion of the proposed project lies within the General Residential District. The unshaded portions on this tax map are of course the county's AR1 Agricultural Residential District. And then the community I referenced a moment ago, Oak Crest Farms, that community has a designation of MR Medium Density Residential. On the future land use map, the property is designated as, the 23-acre parcel is designated as being within a coastal area, which as you know is one of the county's seven growth areas. The six-acre parcel is in this corner of the property right here, and it is located within a low-density area on the 2045 future land use map. For reference, the GR portion of this site is one of those historical zonings, I believe. When you look at the zoning map and when you look at surveys, you can see that the GR designation extends along both sides of the road out approximately 400 feet. And when it does that, of course, it doesn't respect parcel lines or anything else, it's just whatever happens to fall within 400 feet of whatever roadway the zoning designation lies on, that is what occurs. For the purposes this afternoon, this application has both a cluster subdivision component as well as a standard subdivision component, and that's because of the split zoning of the property. There is not, under the Sussex County Code, an option to cluster a GR subdivision, and so the GR subdivision portion of this application is a standard GR subdivision, and the AR1 portion is a cluster subdivision. The property is unimproved as we are here this afternoon. It contains approximately 22.4 acres that are wooded on the balance of the property, almost seven acres are old field areas that have grown up, but they are old field areas. Mr. Whitehouse referenced the letters in opposition that are in the file, and while I don't want to bring more opposition to the application, I would note that I think the number goes up by one because there was an individual, and his name is Gary Kair, K-A-I-E-R, and I may have misspelled his last name, and his, he mistakenly referenced the wrong application, but his comments all clearly relate to this application. And so if you look at his letter of opposition, which is in the last public hearing this afternoon, his comments clearly apply to Beaver Dam Road and Kendale Road and do not apply to whatever the last application is. I don't know how you adjust that in your system, because he clearly references the wrong case number.
Well, I think we, I saw it. It was, yeah. Just got put the wrong place. I don't know how that happened, but.
But having said that, there are.
In somebody's record.
Having said that, there are two common themes, I think, when you read through the emails and letters of opposition, including the one in the other file. And that is traffic or Will King Road and concerns about that, and of course, the removal of wooded areas on the site. That's the common theme that is throughout all of those, and I'll address both of those throughout the presentation this afternoon. At various meetings and at least three, well, many more than three if we include the staff and council, but for the two new individuals, I've said this many times, and I will, you'll probably hear me say it often again, but when you look at the zoning code and the comprehensive plan, it's often analogized to a toolbox and what are the types of tools that exist in it, and one land use tool may be more appropriate than another land use tool for any specific property or location or project. And in this case, this afternoon, we hope you see that the subdivision, the combination standard subdivision and cluster subdivision, as it was designed, is not only the right tool that exists within the zoning code, but is also a superior tool, as is required by the zoning code for the proposed community. One historical note about this application is the individuals behind me, and certainly three of the commissioners will recall that this was also the subject of a prior application a little more than, I think, two years ago now at this point. That prior application was Change of Zone 1937, and it sought to change the zoning designation of the property from the combination GR and AR to an MR RPC overlay, or MR with an RPC overlay, and that application sought the approval of 76 single-family homes. After the Planning Commission process, the application was withdrawn. We hope that you'll see this afternoon that the applicant carefully considered the discussion that occurred during that Planning Commission meeting. There were many comments, just as I anticipate there will be this afternoon, and those comments were carefully considered. Some of those comments involved frankly, just addressing the density and indicating that they've, the opposition felt that there was some sort of density grab going on with seeking to change the zone and have an RPC overlay. And I'll address that as we go on and talk about the density that's proposed this afternoon. But hopefully you'll agree that we put our additional time and design tools to good use since that application was withdrawn. Looking at the screens around the room right now, that is the proposed subdivision plan for your consideration this afternoon. Of course, Will King Road is the road that runs from the top of the screen to the bottom of the screen on the right-hand side. You can see that as this has been redesigned, there are two entrances from Will King Road that are proposed. The first, I'll call it the northern entrance, is, and I may mispronounce this road, but La Jala or La Jola Road entrance, and then there's a southern entrance that is further down Will King Road. I know that this gentleman is retired, but this plan is typical of a Jeff Clark land use plan, and he was the designer of it. And I note that because you will see that there is almost 300 feet along a curved roadway before you come to the first residential unit, which is typical of how he designed his plans, with respect, and that's with respect to the southern entrance off of Will King Road. With respect to the northern entrance, of course, the existing right-of-way that is there creates that same feel where the community is set back from Will King Road a substantial distance. This northern road is a 50-foot right-of-way. All of the improvements that would be done to that entrance would be within that 50-foot right-of-way, and it would not impact the neighboring adjacent property owners within their property boundaries. Certainly, sometimes people extend out beyond a right-of-way when they're maintaining their property, and so there may be some impact there, but within, all of the improvements for that northern entrance can be accomplished within that 50-foot right-of-way. With respect to the southern entrance, there are, that would be of course a new entrance onto Will King Road. There was an indication in some of the letters and emails and opposition that there were easements and such that were needed in order to accomplish that entrance, and there are not, in fact. That has been designed in such a way so that there are no longer easements needed from neighbors in order to accomplish that entranceway. Of course, as you know, through the part of the hearing or part of the meeting that you just went through, Del Dot will play a role in the entrances and will review both of those entrances and confirm, before we get a letter of no contention, whether or not those entrances meet their criteria. As you enter the site, there would be sidewalks along one side of the street, and in addition to the sidewalks, there will be a trail network around the stormwater pond and through the large wooded area in the middle of the community. In addition, with respect to amenities beyond the trail network that includes the sidewalks, there is a playground or play area here centrally located in this corner where the cursor is located. Configuring the site in the manner that you see on the screen allowed for the preservation of 7.8 acres of the wooded areas, which is by percentage is approximately 35% of those wooded areas. I'll come back to this point again, but if this proposed community were laid out as a standard subdivision, the amount of woods that would be preserved would be significantly less than that 7.8 acres or 35%. All of the proposed lots that you see on the screen meet the bulk area requirements that are found within the zoning and subdivision code. For all of the AR lots in the cluster subdivision, these lots all have a minimum size of 7,500 square feet. In the GR district, you can see these lots in this area right here. Those lots meet the minimum size in the GR district, which is of course 10,000 square feet. With the 58 lots that are shown on the screen, the resulting density is two units to the acre, and that amount is less than the base density when one considers the existing zoning designation of the property. And by that, I mean if you take the 23 acres that are zoned AR1 at two units to the acre and multiply that, those 23 acres by two units, you come up with 46 lots. GR is the base zoning classification, and that is four units to the acre, and there are six acres of GR-zoned land here, which is a total of 24 lots. The 26, rather, the 24 GR lots that would be available and the 46 AR lots total 70 lots, and of course, that's 12 more lots than is proposed for the subdivision this afternoon. There's comments in some of the opposition about this being a high-density application, and certainly the Planning Commission will recognize that two units to the acre is not high-density in any part of the zoning code. High-density would be four to 12, and frankly, high-density is much closer to 12 units to the acre than even the four figure. This density that's proposed this afternoon is consistent with the property's designation on the future land use map. As I indicated, it is split-designated. There is a low-density portion of the property, which is essentially this corner of the property right here, and it's also consistent with the coastal area, which allows for, of course, both low-density and then in appropriate locations, those higher densities. The density is also consistent with the State Strategies Map promulgated by the Office of State Planning. That map shows all of the area that is within the coastal area as being in a level three area, and then the area that is in the low-density area as being in a level four area. As is the standard for a cluster subdivision, there will be a 30-foot perimeter landscape buffer around the entirety of the community. As you can see even on this image and some of the prior aerial imagery, many, much of that landscape buffer will just be allowing the existing woods to remain. If there are locations where the landscape buffer is not filled in enough or requires a little enhancement, that's the only time, of course, that more work would be done to do something in that buffer area. There are no regulated wetlands located on the property. Public utilities are available to the property. Tidewater Utilities has provided a ready, willing-enabled letter indicating that it can provide public water, including fire protection to the site. Sussex County's Engineering Department has confirmed capacity for sewage treatment within the Sussex County's Unified Sanitary Sewer System. The property is not located within a wellhead protection area, so there are, and it is within a fair groundwater recharge area, which of course indicates that there are no Special Chapter 89 requirements. There are no known historical sites located within the property, and there are also no endangered, rare threatened or endangered species located on the site, and there was, within the project book materials, a report from the environmental scientists confirming that. The property is not located within a flood zone or a flood plain. It's within the Cape and Lopen School District, and a location for a bus stop will of course be coordinated with the school district as well as shown on a final site plan for the project. A service-level evaluation request was filed with Del Dot, and Del Dot responded both to the service-level evaluation request as well as at other times. And as set forth in those documents, the traffic that is indicated to be promulgated by a 58-lot, single-family home community will have a minor impact on traffic as that term is defined in Sussex County's Memorandum of Understanding with Del Dot. That means that the trip generation Del Dot anticipates is greater than 50 vehicle trips in a peak hour but less than 200, and greater than 500 vehicle trips per day but less than 2,000. If you were to look at Del Dot's Development Coordination Manual, when some, when a community like this or proposed community has a minor impact on traffic, typically that results in the possibility of the developer paying what's called an area-wide study fee in lieu of doing a traffic impact study. However, as confirmed in the response to the service-level evaluation request, this property is located with the Lopen Transportation Improvement District, and because it's located within that district, as the commission knows, properties that are within that district are required to construct their entrance improvements, but then they pay a per-unit or per-square-foot cost into the Transportation Improvement District for future improvements to the roads in that area. And as, as the commission is familiar with, that per-unit, per-square-foot cost gets adjusted, I believe, on an annual basis as it's reviewed by County Council.
Mr. Hutt, can I hit the pause button right there? Because the TID, I know three of our commissioners are familiar with that, but two may not be. So, in coordination with Del Dot, Sussex County's entered into agreement basically saying, within a geographical area of Sussex County, which this property happens to be in, Del Dot actually has gone out and reviewed all of the road improvements that would be necessary based upon the anticipated build-out of the properties, and that anticipated build-out was done in conjunction with Sussex County. So they know to actually a fairly detailed level the road improvements that'll be necessary, and so that way they can generate estimates that escalate each year how much it would cost to build those over the life of the TID. And what that then means is that if there is a project that's approved within the TID, in addition to the entrance requirements that are associated with that project, the developer, or at some stage, there has to be essentially a Transportation Improvement District fee or impact fee for transportation that's paid per unit or per square foot of its commercial to Del Dot to cover the costs that's been negotiated for the improvements within that area. So, it kind of streamlines the process. It was, it was actually a fairly robust exercise that occurred between us and Del Dot, but it has the benefit of looking at this area of Sussex County holistically instead of one-off each time we have a subdivision. So I appreciate that, Mr. Hutt, for giving me the time to hit the pause button, and just for reference, we're looking at doing one on the other side of the county that's in the works now, too. So anyhow, thank you, Mr. Hutt. I appreciate that.
The, I think probably the most frequent question, though, that comes from the Transportation Improvement District is, when is that improvement coming to, and the folks who live right here, to Will King Road, or whatever road you happen to live on that's within the Transportation Improvement District? And frankly, that's, as Mr. Robertson alluded to a moment ago, that's part of the negotiation between county and Del Dot that takes place on a regular basis. I can report that Will King Road is not within the fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 28 CTP or Capital Transportation Program. However, the, while it's not within that program presently, what is out there is that Will King Road is slated to be improved to have 11-foot travel lanes, five-foot shoulders, a multi-use path, and improved drainage along that roadway as, as Del Dot gets to that road within the Transportation Improvement District. What this means for Will King Station is that should the application be successful, it will have to pay that per-unit fee that we just talked about. It will have to construct its entrances, and in addition to that, it will have to make some drainage improvements along Will King Road, because you can't negatively impact, as the Planning Commission has heard many times, you can't negatively impact stormwater and drainage. And so in order to make sure that doesn't happen, there will be a drainage improvement down to a crossroad pipe that this application would be responsible, responsible for, even though it is within the Transportation Improvement District. Throughout the materials that Mr. Whitehouse referenced when he introduced the application, and they are all, of course, in the Planning Commission file and shown on the online docket that exists, the, all the elements of Chapter 99C for a subdivision have been met and described how they are accomplished and in satisfaction of the code's requirements, and I don't want to belabor those this afternoon, but certainly if you have questions about any of the Chapter 99 requirements, I would welcome any questions. The one thing I did want to return to, though, is, is the discussion about how the, the cluster subdivision tool is the right tool for this project and a superior tool for this project. With respect to the cluster subdivision code, it requires a subdivision to, and I'm just going to quote the language, "to provide for a total environment and design which are superior to what could be achieved under a standard subdivision." The code goes on to describe a four-step process that a land use designer or engineer is supposed to undertake in order to complete the cluster subdivision process. And the first step in that process is to identify lands that should be preserved, and the code goes through and itemizes a list of the types of lands that should be preserved. It's lands with historical features, lands where rare threatened or endangered species are located, areas where, that include wetlands, waterways, and there's other items in that list. As you will see in looking at this slide, it is a completely white sheet of paper because none of the special environmental features that are itemized in the code exist on this property. The second step in the design process is to identify the developable areas, and of course, the developable areas in a project would be the areas outside of those special environmental or other characteristics that I just indicated. And so in this instance, the developable area is, is the entirety of that site. The next step or third step is to locate roads and trails in the, in the community. And you can see that what was done here is to base, to take those two entrances and connect them in a fashion that you could have lots on either side of those roadways, showed some proposed locations for stormwater management, and then showed a trail network and sidewalk network that connects those items as indicated by the code. The fourth and final step in the design process is to locate the lots or to put in the lot lines for the proposed community. In this case, you will see that when, when that was done, there's actually a reduction in the number of roadways.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you, if you would, excuse me, Mr. Hutt, please direct your attention to the speaker. You'll have a chance to speak when it's your turn. If you're having difficulty hearing, you're welcome to move up, or sometimes if you actually go out in the lobby. go out in the lobby, you can hear it on the speaker better. So that's, that would be the two options if you're having difficulty hearing, but please feel free to move up. This is not church where nobody's gonna, gonna bite you, so if you need to move up so you can hear better, please do. I'm sorry, Mr. Hutt, go ahead.
Thank you. When the fourth step is completed, adding the lot lines in, that is the, the image that you see on the screen, and of course, is the subdivision application that's in front of you. And you can see when you go back and look at the initial road network, it was a little more robust than the road network that, as it has this connector road here with lots planned on that. With the elimination of that other road, again, it resulted in a central wooded or park area for the entirety of the community. And on this slide, you can see that we've highlighted the open space that is provided. In addition to the 30-foot landscape buffer that is shown, this crosshatched area around, along this boundary of the property is another requirement of the Sussex County Code. There's a 50-foot building setback requirement for, for properties that are adjacent to agricultural areas, and there is a large agricultural area immediately to the left or west of this The result of that design process that I just went through and described is the clustered subdivision design that you see on the screen with a design that's superior to that of a standard subdivision for many reasons, including the following. First, as you see this on the screens around the room, as I indicated, there are 7.8 acres of existing woodlands, or 30, a little more than 35% of those woodlands that end up being preserved. In addition, the open space that you see there encompasses a little more than 13 acres, which is approximately 45% of the site. As you know, the zoning code requires a cluster subdivision to have open space of 30%. So this 45% is substantially more than is, than what is required under the code. The smaller lot sizes, as compared to a standard subdivision, also, of course, allowed for the creation of this larger open space, and the open spaces here rather than these lots extending deeper, which of course creates open areas and a feeling of, greater feeling of openness in the community for the members, and is connected by the trail network and the sidewalk network, again, with that central playground area as an amenity. Contrary to the last time that this application was in front of the planning commission, this afternoon's application is certainly not a density grab of any type. As indicated, this is actually below the base density when you combine the GR base density as well as the AR base density. The clustered subdivision also, from a technical engineering standpoint, means that there will be less mass grading of the site in order to install the infrastructure. In addition, the existing topography can be better utilized as part of the stormwater management process. Hopefully this afternoon, through the presentation and the, the materials that are in the project book and in the planning and zoning office files, it's been demonstrated that the proposed cluster subdivision is superior to what would occur under a standard subdivision and the right tool for this property. As I noted at the outset of, of my presentation, the, the primary comments in opposition to this subdivision application relate to traffic in Will King Road and the trees. With the dual entrances that you see on the screen and the clustered lot size for the AR portion, the result of that is more tree preservation and safer and better vehicular access onto Will King Road. Even earlier this afternoon, we heard some consternation about how Del Dot's going to allow that secondary means of access for first responders who are trying to get into a community that has a singular entrance. And with this design, that there will be two entrances, so that will not be a question as to how to achieve that secondary means of, of access. In short, this is a low-density project that preserves substantially more forested area than would otherwise be preserved by a standard subdivision. One additional note that I did want to reference, because it's set forth in some of the opposition, it, the opposition notes that this site was historically used as a dumping area. There was vehicles, old housing, and other trash and debris on the site. And in fact, my client can confirm that, because in their initial due diligence under the first application, through both a Phase 1 and then part of a Phase 2 study, the presence of antimony was found on the site. And I didn't know this before, but that comes from batteries, and I think largely car batteries that would be left in those wooded areas. And again, while those individuals are correct about that that was there and the condition of the property, my client has spent a considerable sum of money cleaning up that area, removing that debris, and the report that Mr. Whitehouse referenced a moment ago is a July 25 report. And the reason that it's July 25th that it was submitted is because that's when the second set of sampling came back from the, the lab. And I, I point that out because initially, the developer went in at the instruction of Mr. McCully, and I know the commission's familiar with Jim McCully from Watershed Eco, but he laid out the remediation process, and it involved removal of the trash and then removal of some soil from the location where that had been located. And that was done, and then they went out and tested it, and with the original test that came back, there was still a trace presence of the antimony on the site, and so more soil removal was accomplished. And then there was a second set of testing that occurred, which showed no traces of the antimony. And all of that is detailed in these 50 or 60 pages that is now part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's file. I think everyone can agree that the cleanup of this property and prohibition from other people dumping on this property is important for and benefits not only this property but everybody that lives in that area. With the design that you see on the screens around the room, the requirements of both the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, specifically Chapter 99, and the requirements for a cluster subdivision in Chapter 115, Section 25, have been met. And for all of those reasons, my client would ask the planning commission to approve this subdivision. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that members of the commission or staff may have, and I will hand to Mr. Robertson and Mr. Wheatley some proposed findings of fact and conditions of preliminary approval.
All right, we thank you, Mr. Hutt. We'll see if anyone on the commission has any questions for you, and we'll start with Ms. Wingate.
I just have a couple. You, I had a whole lot more, but you answered a lot of them specifically about the trash. But do you have any information about the density of any of the nearby communities that are already existing?
The densi, I do not, I did not bring the specific density counts, because our density is two units to the acre, which is the, the base, base, base density of Sussex County. Again, Oak Crest Farms is MR, those lots are the same size essentially as the lots that are in this community, and Coral Lakes is, of course, a cluster subdivision as, as this is, and so the cluster.
I asked that more because of the concern of the roadways, because it is a very small roadway. So that, that was really why I was asking more so, to, to put that many units on Will King Road, that many more. But I understand with the improvements that Del Dot would require them to do, it would certainly enhance that roadway by putting shoulders in.
Well, Del Dot will be doing that. We will not be doing the shoulder work. Del Dot would be.
But you're going to have your own improvements you're going to have to do for your entrance and stuff, so that's going to expand what they're doing.
Absolutely, in those, where the entrance is located.
Right, right. And I, I was confused when I was out there. I didn't realize that the La Jolla Shores Drive or whatever that is, I didn't realize that was an existing road, so I didn't even look for it. So that road is in place now?
A, the road is a narrow road, it's a 50-foot right-of-way that extends back from Will King Road back to this property boundary. And if you were to click on a tax map, it shows the, the front two-thirds of it as being state of Delaware owned or maintained, or I think is the word that it has.
But you would have permission to be able to use that as a second entrance?
I believe, Mr., yes, but I could, Mr. Boyce could confirm that. He's been in contact with Del Dot.
Is it like state maintained, is it not, it's not like just state land, it's a state Del Dot right-of-way, is that what you mean when you say that, or?
I think it's unclear as to what it, what it is, but it is a 50-foot right-of-way that exists from Will King Road to this property.
Okay. Known by the state.
That's what the, the tax records indicate that it is.
That's what makes sure.
The first portion is owned by the state, the, the balance of the portion is, is done.
Okay.
All right. The other question I had was concerning the chemicals that were found on the site, but you answered those already. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any questions, but I believe staff has a comment about the right-of-way.
Yes, this was just in regard to the, the entrance north shown. As stated, about a third, two-thirds of it is parceled out and owned by the, the state of Delaware, and then it turns into an easement all across the lands. I believe there is a plot book that is cited on the, the county maps as well, that which, that shows that easement and the beginning of the road in ownership of the state of Delaware.
So does it look like other houses are using part of it that are not owned by Delaware? Are there parts of it that are basically not within what the state owns that you would be then taking accountability for maintaining?
Right here, yes.
Okay, it just starts there, okay.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I have a question on a.
Oh, sir.
I'm sorry. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I, my question would be, at least I heard you say not until after 2018, or sorry, 2028, before this likely Will King Road would receive any upgrades. There's no firm plans for when those upgrades would occur.
The, the magic with Del Dot, this is from a layman's terms, i- is that you want to appear in the CTP budget, and presently, Will King Road unfortunately does not appear in the, the '23 to '28 budget, and, and that's how it's laid out. So, everybody on Will King Road needs to be lobbying their county council persons and anybody, their state representatives to have Will King Road's timeline moved up in the, the budgeting process for Del Dot. Again, I suspect anybody who lives on an unimpro, you know, a road that needs improvements is going to be doing the same thing, but, but no, that's, I guess, to, to, just to clarify, it is not within the FY '23 to FY '28 CTP.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Butler?
I have a question for the retention ponds. I mean, would it be consideration, say, I'm looking at one, it's going to be one, 1.4 acres of retention pond, would they consider putting a standpipe in there for the fire service? So, the congestion on that road will provide safety for them, the homes in the development, where they actually could feed water if there actually was a fire in that area?
Dry hydrant.
Yeah, dry hydrant, standpipe, yeah.
I'm going to ask our engineer to answer that question, because I'm not, at the off time ahead, I don't recall whether these are wet ponds or dry ponds. And so I will ask him to introduce himself and, and answer that question, but I would also note that the ponds, to my knowledge, have not been hard engineered, so those are approximate sizes and approximate locations that obviously it goes through the Sussex Conservation District to verify that we're properly managing the quality and quantity of water. But I'll ask Mr. Pfeiffer if he could introduce himself and then answer the question about the possibility of a, a dry pipe.
Chris Pfeiffer, professional engineer with George Miles and Bure. So the, the ponds have not been fully designed yet, these are really just preliminary at this stage. They are going to be, they are planned to be wet ponds, that could change as we continue to go through the design process. That's something that we could look into working with the Conservation District, who ultimately is the one that approves the, the stormwater design. We could definitely look into that with them as we go through that design process.
I just know the congest, the congestion and the size of the fire trucks now, running big tankers out there, it's becoming more and more of an issue.
Understood, yeah, that's a very good point.
Anything else, Mr. Butler?
No, good.
Okay, great, okay. Staff, anything?
None for me, thank you.
None for me at this point, thanks. Nope, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Hutt, you can take a seat nearby. We'll see if there's anyone here that has an interest in your application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of Subdivision 2022-18, Will King Station? Anyone like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to Subdivision 20-22-18? All right, well, we'll, well, you're going to come up here if you're going to speak, so come on up.
My name is Peter R. Derrick Senior, and I'm proud of it. I've lived out in that area since 1970, and I've seen everything you could ever think goes on across that property and everywhere else. Flooding is the issue we have out there, bad. The road, most roads come right to a point, and that's where we're at, right there. Gotten in a boat next door and paddled all the way up to the house, grandpa's house, there was that much water. It comes clean up to my front door, and that's been many a times done that, and there's really been no improvements. State's done a few things, but other than that, I like to, as far as easement. You going to use state right-of-way?
Sir, sir, you need, you'd come this way.
You going to use state right-of-way for easement?
We'll, we'll ask them. Well, the, 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 the state right-of-way, you're talking about the, the road width?
Easement, they're going to have to have for, due to roads. Are you going to use state right-of-way?
Sure, to the extent that they're, that the state permits them to do it, they will, yeah.
Yeah. Because there were so few, I don't know whether one of these gentlemen did it or not, were going around the neighborhood and said we'd sell them some property.
Well, they're trying to make their easement wider is what they're doing, so they're, they'll make these guys give it to them.
Yeah. Well, both roads, you're going to have roads going in and going out. I now know where the other one is, they were put in to the right of us. Where's the other road going?
So, it's, if you look on the maps on the screen.
It's across from Dawson Drive.
Wait a second, can you drive that? Bear with us a second.
May I assist, Mr. Chairman? If I just put the county's online map up, because that's more interactive, so.
Yeah, that'll give us.
I'm going to need a minute, though, just.
Sure, take your time.
addresses.
Right, okay. I understand, I know.
So, it looks like one of the entrances is going roughly across from Dawson Drive at the bottom, and the other one is kind of offset from Dutton Lane at the top. So, it won't be directly across from Dawson Drive, but it will be close.
Very good, thank you. My next question, what type of sewage? Central, or sewage has their own private sewerage for each house?
It'll be a public system.
Be a public system. May I ask where it's coming from?
Which, which company is furnishing the sewer? Is it county, or is it a?
County, Sussex County.
And they'll have a pump station on site as well.
County sewer, they have their own pump station, they're going to build, they're going to make them build a pump station.
Yeah, maybe every binary area, because there's a lot of areas that need it. Can you think of anything else right now?
If it's running by your house, I'm sure they'd like to have you.
Yeah, I retired from the county and state, so I understand a few things. I thank you all for your time.
Just indeed, all righty, we thank you.
Take care.
Yes, indeed, who's next? Yes, sir, right over by the blue shirt there, come on, come on up.
I have a.
Your name is?
I'll get to that in a minute.
Why don't you skip to it first?
Sergei Boboshko.
Thank you.
And I'll spell it for you if you need it. I have just a couple of slides I want to show, do I just put it in here?
Well, I'll have to ask one of our technical experts here.
These should have been submitted in advance of the meeting, Mr. Chairman, so staff could have screened them, but if I can have a quick look at them real quick.
If you would hand them up to our, to our director, he'll take a look at them and.
And if I could ask, Mr. Chairman, whether anyone else in the room wishes to speak has any presentation material that they have not yet submitted? Yes, please.
Probably add that to our preamble, you know, anybody has anything they need to turn it in ahead of time, yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we got a gentleman speaking, let's, let's listen to him.
Okay, so, my name is Sergei Boboshko, spelled B-O-B-O-S-H-K-O. Can we get the first slide up, or? Okay, my name's at the lower left-hand corner there, but I'd be happy to spell it if anybody would like to, okay. I'm a resident of the Chapel Green Community, which is about 500 feet south of the proposed Will King Station Development. About a year and a half ago, in November of 2021, and together with other of my colleagues from the Sussex Preservation Group, I spoke here in opposition to the first attempt to implement this project. That application was denied by this commission on November 18th, 2021, with most of the reasons related to the developer's request for a zoning change. However, one other reason for that denial concerned the characteristics of Will King Road. I'm here today to speak again about road conditions on Will King Road, and how it continues to be unsafe, and why it therefore would be consistent for the Planning and Zoning Commission to once again deny this application. First, some facts. Will King Road is a two-lane road with a length of only 1.8 miles. This has not changed since November of 2021. The speed limit is 45 miles per hour, although as a result of it being a straightaway for most of its length, except for the last few hundred feet at the northern end, I've rarely witnessed anyone actually staying within this speed limit. This has also not changed since 19, since 2021. Will King Road is very narrow, with drainage ditches for most of its length, and with few stretches where you could identify anything like a shoulder. This also has not changed. Will King Road has no lighting along its full length, resulting in poor visibility. This also has not changed. Next slide, please. Will King Road is heavily populated by seven, by 98 single-family homes along its entire length, which means that there are 98 mailboxes along this narrow road. I believe that there will be a few neighbors from these homes who will relate their experiences in retrieving their mail from these mailboxes. Will King Road also provides access to six communities, resulting in more than 520 homes served by this road. Not surprisingly, there are schoolchildren who live in these homes, and the following information was provided to me by Mr. Richard Chrishy, the transportation supervisor at the Cape Henlopen School District a few weeks ago on May 23rd. Next slide, please. I draw your attention to the right-hand side of this slide, which shows information as of a few weeks ago, that along the 1.8-mile length of Will King Road, there are seven bus stops to pick up 21 elementary schoolchildren, eight bus stops to pick up 19 middle schoolchildren, and 10 bus stops to pick up 21 high schoolers. This is a total of 25 stops, bus stops, currently each morning to pick up 61 schoolchildren each school day, including two of my own grandchildren, and the same number of bus stops each afternoon when these schoolchildren are returned home at the end of the school day. Thus, there are a total of 50 school bus stops currently on the 1.8 miles of Will King Road each school day. You can see from the information on the left-hand side of this slide that the numbers have increased compared with the information provided to me by Mr. Chrishy in November of 2021, when we initially opposed this development. I would expect that these numbers will continue to increase as younger families continue to relocate to this area. In a letter to Mr. Whitehouse from Mr. William Brockenbraugh of Del搁 dated December 2nd, 2020, which was included as part of the packet for the first attempt to implement this project, and is still part of the packet for the current application. Next slide, please. In that letter, Del搁 states, as you can see, that the, per the 2019 Delaware Vehicle Volume Survey, Summary, the annual average daily traffic volume along this segment of Will King Road is 1,455 vehicles per day. So, this is as of 2019, or four years ago. I recently spoke with Sarah Copely at Del搁 regarding any more recent information on average daily traffic volume on Will King Road, and she referred me to Mr. Louis Fortones, a program engineer for such matters at Del搁. He agreed to initi, I was surprised there was nothing more recent, but he agreed to initiate a more current analysis, which covered the five and a half days from July 20th through July 25th, which resulted in 1,906 vehicle trips per day, which is a significant, although not surprising, increase of 31% in vehicle trips per day over that which was recorded in 2019. And this is even before considering the impact of another 58 homes proposed for this revised Will King Station development. I had asked Mr. Fontanes to send this recent information to Mr. Whitehouse as well, so that, to have it included with the other information related to this application and available to anyone who may wish to see it, and I understand from Mr. Young that it was received, right? Okay, so, and in conclusion, we have a road today with the following characteristics. Next slide, please. 1.8 miles in length with one lane each way, narrow with no shoulders and drainage ditches most of the way, with no lighting.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, you've just got to hold it while the gentleman is speaking, if you can't focus your attention up here, please go out in the lobby and feel free to have all the discussion you want. Sorry, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I think, with no lighting and poor visibility along its full length, where motorists typically exceed the speed limit, with other types of large vehicles such as garbage, delivery, and landscaping trucks often blocking the road due to lack of shoulders. It's already heavily populated with more than 520 homes accessing the road, with currently 50 school bus stops each school day to accommodate 61 schoolchildren, and, not surprisingly, considering all the developments approved in the surrounding area, significant increases in traffic volume along this road. Thus, a road which continues to present significant risks for motorists, residents, and schoolchildren, and this is even before considering the impact of another 58 homes proposed for the revised Will King Station development. In short, Will King Road continues to be unsafe, and to be consistent should again be a reason for the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny this application. Thank you.
All right, sir, we thank you. Okay, who's next? We'll go over here on this side, I think this lady right here.
Should I just take this out, or?
Sir, can I ask a question, just before you leave the podium?
Yeah.
I've never seen Del搁 do a study like this in a situation like this when asked, I'm just curious how that came about.
I have to tell you, I was surprised. When I, I, my intention was to find out, is there anything more recent?
Right.
And he said, no, we don't, but, you know, we should, we should do one.
Right.
And he said, well, I can commission one, you know, in the next couple of days, so I would, I, I was as stunned as you were, and I don't know, anyone who's, anyone who's.
Can Sussex County hire you to get stuff done with Del搁?
If they have, they haven't paid me yet. But if anyone traveled Will King Road in the last week or so, I mean, they had the wires across the road, so, I mean, and so, I just got this information yesterday.
The, the reason I ask is because, you know, usually there's a whole process that, that an applicant or the county or whoever has to go through, you know, that's got guardrails on it, and there's all these hoops you got to jump through, and all sorts of regulatory things, and it sounds like you called somebody up, and they said, sure, we'll do a traffic count, and they did one, you know, and I guess my question is.
I guess I'm pretty good.
Yeah, the flip side of it is, though, you know, when they, when there's a TIS done and a TIS review letter, there's certain parameters that are involved in that, you know, and so it's sort of done from an engineering standpoint with specific calculations, I just, I, I, you know, there's not the same level of detail on this that we typically get on, you know.
Oh, so you have it?
Yeah, we do, we, yeah, we have it. I'm just, I'm surprised and amazed, you know, that it happened, so.
It's our government at work, folks.
The government works in strange ways.
Might be something they're, they're doing wrong to know. Yeah, because I have seen those strips in a lot of different places lately.
Well, and they do them, but usually that's in conjunction with, you know, a more formal traffic study, you know, not where a member of the public calls up and does it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just, sure is a new one, so, anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, and congratulations to the new two commissioners. Hello to the commission. My name is Janet Levy-Gabel. I own 31418 La Jolla Shores, La Jolla Shores Drive in Lewis. I named the road after a surf spot in California, beautiful surf spot as a surfer. I, yeah, it's a beautiful place. I oppose the Will King Station Cluster subdivision of 58 homes on Will King Road with connector road to La Jolla Shores Drive for these reasons. And Ashley uploaded my PowerPoint.
Great, we have it printed, and you can plug your flash drive in at the side there.
So, this is not my slide here.
No, you can plug your flash drive in at the side.
You put your flash drive in.
Can I advance, or do you have to advance?
If I load it, you can use your.
Okay, thank you. Not to be repetitive, but I'll go real quickly on the flooding. It's Mr. Harmon's house adjacent to where this development will be. This is across from where the entrance will be for the development. This is across from the entrance. They were taken in December of 2021, December of 2020. This is across, this is Donald Daisy's house, this is across from, this is after the water had subsided. This is across from where the entrance will be. This is up the road, across from a parcel that I own, and that would be on the east side, across from the parcel, flooding in the pasture. This is a video, and can I play, let's see, I guess, is this play? I can't tell. There we go. This is of me trying to get mail and cross the road.
Not a good idea to stop in the middle like that. It's very expensive.
I have a lot of experience, I've lived there for 18 years, okay?
Don't tempt those people.
Been getting that, that mail for 18 years. It's not fun at 5 o'clock in October when it's dark. Another picture of me standing in the road because there's no shoulder. This is how close the homes are on Will King Road, a string of mailboxes. This is La Jolla Shores Drive. So, for the first comment, the flooding, and if Del搁 doesn't have any remedy to fix it until 2028, this subdivision should not be approved because of that. Mr. Rutt admitted Del搁 is aware and could possibly fix it by 2028. In your packet, Jessica Watson from Denrick admits that in the packet, there's concern of standing water in this area. This was one of the reasons that it was denied, it was a zone change, but it was denied because of the flooding in that area, similar to River Oak Orchard, River Road, and Stillwater Harbor. Does not meet Cluster Subdivision 99C, fitting in with the GR zoning of the entire 1.8-mile street, because you have to enter through the GR area to get to the cluster subdivision. So, in other words, an entrance to a cluster is a GR area, and I don't, I, I emailed Lauren DeVore, and I've never, I've, I asked for, I said, has this ever been approved before where you enter through a GR to a cluster? And all of the, all of the developments that Mr. Rutt stated that were on Will King, not on the surrounding areas, none of them are clusters. So, this would be the first cluster subdivision of Will King Road that would access through a GR point, okay? So, let me give you a little history of the parcel. I used to own, I used to own the top right-hand corner, the 6.24 acres. I also own the bottom 4.212 acres, and when a relative and I decided that we weren't going to develop it, we, we split it in half. He took the north portion, I took the south portion, and we created an easement, which I have a copy for you. The easement. The easement states, I have my deed, my original deed, it's a copy, and you'll have it, it says, "Together with, however, to the following easements, northeastment and southeastment for ingress, egress, and utilities for the benefit of Lot C." So that triangular portion is Lot C. That's the portion that the developer is trying to access La Jolla Shores Drive for a second access. But that's not how the deed reads, and this, of course, is a question for the attorney. The deed says, "For ingress, egress, and utilities for the benefit of Lot C, as shown on the above described plot, which easements shall benefit for the current and future owners of Lot C, respective heirs and successors and assigns." I have that for you. This is not an easement for a 58-acre parcel, and the developer has a connector road right on here that says, "Future Possible Connector." There's a 1,000-acre farm behind this, so if we're going to have more homes built, and they're going to use an easement that they have to go through my property, my, my land, 100, 200, 300 cars a day, that's not what the easement was intended for. The easement was intended to access Lot C. I have my original survey from Charlie Kaufman, 2000, and then the updated one in 2004, showing the easement that would access Lot C for the six acres only. And I have a copy of that for you also. This is similar to Jackson Drain Lane that we went through with Stillwater Harbor. I talked to Del Dot, and I talked to John Fiori, who's a planner at Del Dot. He said, he said that, he looked at this, and he said, "La Jolla Shores Drive will need 160-foot, and with a 50 taper and 110 feet of storage." So you, you would have to take people's land, and then it's eminent domain. And what he said was, only Del Dot has the right, if they want to widen a road, to take somebody's lane. A private developer cannot do that. Eminent domain is used for Del Dot only. So I'll go back to a little bit of this parcel. The principal right here, Webster Gray, he emailed me over two dozen times trying to buy my lot, my 4.12 acres, so that he could have that easement. He wanted it. It was borderline on harassment, and I have those emails here for, all for you. And he started at 5,000, then he went to 10, then he went to 15, then he went to 25,000 an acre, and then he went to $65,000 an acre. And I kept telling him, I'm not selling, I'm not selling, I'm not selling. So the reason he wants my land, it's because he'll have an easement touching that back portion of La Jolla Shores Drive. I have property rights as an owner, and having a development connector road through my land is not what my deed states at all. I dedicated the road, the road was a private lane. I have pictures of the road, which are, that's it, that's the road. It's seven feet, eight inches. The paved part is the part I paved to access my house, okay? That's the road there, you see it? It's a gravel, that's it, a gravel dirt lane. I had it dedicated to public use in 2014 at the direction of Representative Smick, so we could get some funding to fix the road, because I was the one paying for the gravel and the, you know, Melvin Joseph to come out and dump the gravel and fix the road. Well, Del Dot hasn't given me a penny, and I'm in the process with the other two neighbors that live on the street to dedicate it back to private, and that will be done within the next 30 days. So La Jolla Shores Drive will be a private road again. So that lane, that La Jolla Shores Drive, when you look back, that's my house on the left, the blue house. When you look back, it will have access to Lot C, which is the 6.27 acres, but not access to any other parcel that is surrounding it. Another reason to deny. Those homes on that road have been there since the 60s and 70s, not that one particular, there was a trailer there. But the wells are so close to the road that wells will have to be removed and relocated, and utility lines will have to be removed and relocated, because there wasn't any really regulations in the 1960s. That woman there, her trailer, she will have maybe one car length to park if you approve an entrance on La Jolla Shores Drive. Trying to get my mail, try it at February when it's 5 o'clock at night. Streetlights at the entrance will flood into people's homes. So why do they need two entrances? In, just in June, the developer added that second entrance. In, in, up till June, it had one entrance. He added the second entrance because he has a connector road, because he's gonna buy the farmland behind this, which is about a 1,000-acre farm, so that he won't have any problem with that getting approved, because there's already another entrance, in my opinion. I don't know what he's thinking, but in my opinion, why would you go from this with one entrance, and then all of the sudden, in June, you've got an entrance on La Jolla Shores Drive? Why? For 58 homes, you don't need it. I talked to John Fiori, he's a planner at Del Dot. You don't need two entrances for 58 homes.
Well, the way Del Dot's been going lately, they're only gonna get one anyway, so, I don't know. Yeah, so, your point's well, your point's well taken. We hear what you're saying.
Okay. So, so for these, for the reasons that I stated, I think the commission should deny for these reasons, Wilking Station. Approve conditional upon an entrance beyond Beaver Dam Road with no street through from La Jolla or the 6.27 acre parcel. He already has a connector road in there. I could point it out for you if you want. It's right here. Possible future connection right here, right here. So if you choose to approve it, second condition, conditional upon the developer leaving up all the mature trees in the 30-foot buffer, which is Level 4, state Level 4, and these trees have been there since 1937, and I measured them with a neighbor, and they're 40 inches in diameter and bigger, okay? Then I also ask, conditional upon the developer installing a post-rail fence along my property line adjacent to this property, to be maintained by the HOA, to keep residents off my land, but to allow the wildlife to get through, whatever slim wildlife we have left after these clusters. I don't want to be arguing with homeowners that they're putting their, you know, broken-down lawn mowers or whatever they, people put in the back of their yard on my land, and then I have a headache on my hands, okay? So a post-rail fence on my property line, but I also would like buffer zone signs every 25 feet on the development sign for residents not to cut the buffer down, because that's what residents do. When you have a 7,000-square-foot lot, they clear a little bit more of it, so their backyard, so their grandkids can play in their backyard. So I would ask for 25 feet, every 25 feet, a posted sign saying to not disturb the buffer Approve, again, conditional upon the entrance being on Beaver Dam Road, and lastly, I approve that no walking trails be located close to my property line. So if this is approved, and I don't know, and I called, I emailed Lauren, and I never got an answer, but this would set a precedent. If you're going to approve a Cluster subdivision through a GR zone, this would set a precedent. And I ask all of you, please, drive down Wilking Road. I know Ms. Wingate lives, lives south, I think Mr. Collins, what?
I think.
Yeah. And drive down La Jolla Shores Drive. You think it's a driveway. And, and see if this La Jolla Shores Drive entrance makes sense or not. And then I have a couple other questions. I just wanted to know what the price point would be for these homes?
We're not concerned with that.
Okay. And so, doesn't meet, this is my last point, does not meet Cluster Subdivision 99C, and it does not protect the safety of the existing residents, which is what the code is supposed to do. This road is already dangerous, really should not have another 2,000 or 1,000 cars a day on it. People backing to their driveways, or you're trying to back out of your driveway, you end up on Wilking Road, and hopefully, somebody's gonna slow down for you. So I have some handouts for you, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Who wants to?
Mr. Whitehouse, if you could.
Yeah, if you could give those to Mr. Whitehouse. Yes, ma'am, with your hand in the air, come on.
My name is Jill Hicks. My address is 37 Aintree Drive, Lewis. And this is the presentation that says Wilking 2 on it.
Mr. Chairman, we do have that, but you will need to put the flash drive back in, so we actually have printed copies, so.
Take it out and put it back in?
If you put your flash drive in.
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I have a petition here that has been signed by 96 residents. These 96 signatures are for people who live along Wilking Road. They're not just, doesn't sound like much, but these are people who really have a standing in this. I am here in opposition to Wilking Station, Application 202218. I live in Chapel Green, one of the two entrances for Chapel Green. The secondary entrance is on Wilking Road, so I am very familiar with this roadway and this property. This application was heard in November 2021, as you already heard, and they wanted a zoning change for 76 home on 29 acres. The, let's see, I'm gonna try to skip some of the repetitiveness and move along here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
As we, as we mentioned before, the front part of the property is Zone GR. GR runs the entire length of Wilking Road on both sides. Wilking Road is a narrow road with deep tach, with deep ditches on both sides, and the roadway is prone to flooding, particularly at this property and just north of the property, as noted in the Del Dot report. Former Commissioner Kim Hoey Stevenson stated that the application for rezoning in 2021, she stated that the road cannot support the increased density. The condition of the roadway has not changed, nor is it likely to change in my lifetime. And I would think that, you know, Mr. Hutt said that there wouldn't be any plans or any changes would happen until, at least until 2028, and any plans after that, I would get that in writing. There's nothing planned for that road. If the developer desires to cluster homes in the rear portion of the site, then the exit and entrance belongs on Beaver Dam Road, but certainly not Wilking, as evidenced by the motion made by Commissioner Hoey Stevenson and what I'm about to show you. Now, can I advance these slides, or?
You can give the actual words on the keyboard.
Oh, great, thank you. Let me go back here. Let's see, I'm gonna go down another one. The developer knows about the need, about the need for an entrance outside of Wilking Road. They left a lot open marked for future connection on their plan, which I highlighted in green. Even they recognize that Wilking Road is not suitable for entrance and exit for this development. This plan should not be approved until that connection through and onto proper entrance and roadway can be secured. Let's take a look from ground level. These pictures were taken at 7:00 PM on July 18th, a Wednesday evening. This was safer time for me to do this, to avoid people flying up behind me or trying to zip around me. I happened to catch this crew at the beginning of my ride. This is typical on this road. When crews are called in to work at a residence or utility along this roadway, the driveways cannot accommodate their equipment, and there are no shoulders, only deep ditches, and no one wants to back their trailer alongside a deep ditch. So they park on the road. Trucks making deliveries to residences along this corridor, such as FedEx, UPS, US Mail, and Amazon Prime, likewise, park on the road using their flashers and then dash up to the houses on both sides, further blocking the roadway and the visibility around their vehicles. They do this to avoid the ditches and having to back out into traffic. A week before this, I witnessed a near accident where a resident was backing out onto their driveway, the same time a car was trying to cut around a box truck parked along the road, I should say, in the road, actually. These hazards that exist every day are not part of the Del Dot analysis and report. How would they know? However, the people who live here and deal with it every day are reporting these conditions to you by attending this hearing. Signing the petition, I submitted, and written letters. That's why we're here, so please hear us. There are 98 mailboxes along this stretch of road, as Mr. Babasco pointed out. On trash day, there could be 196 cans located between the roadway and the ditches. We all circle around them and their trucks. I'm a patient person, but a pretty long line can build up behind a trash truck picking up that many cans. As Mr. Babasco stated, there are 50 school bus stops every day, and cars fly around the buses with hopes of getting ahead of them before their next stop. They have all those stops because the road is too dangerous for schoolchildren to walk up and down to a different stop other than right in front of their house. Also note the small yellow sign on the right that someone made and says, "Bambi Crossing, please slow down, thank you." The woods along this road are full of deer and other critters. They are more mobile and apt to cross this corridor during different seasons of the year. This year, being displaced by the clear-cutting of Brantwood, formerly known as Coral Lakes, we have witnessed substantially more movement and carnage. This sign appears on both sides of the road. This is directly, there you see Dawson Drive, as that gentleman spoke about earlier. This is directly across from Wilking Station site. Note the line of many mailboxes along the right-hand side of the road, the lack of safe place to stand while retrieving one's mail, and the need to cross the road to retrieve, to get one's mail for many residents, and the deep tach ditches and culverts on either side. Which brings up another point. This site plan does not include a middle left-hand turn lane. For many homes, using Wilking Road as their only access point, there needs to be a middle turn lane, plus there should be shoulders for right-hand turns. We see now that that's not possible. There is no room for proper ingress and egress to this site. It does not belong here with its only access on and off Wilking Road. I was also puzzled by the developer's comment in a document titled, "Actions to Mitigate Detrimental Impacts." Quote, "Open space corridors are located to promote and encourage pedestrian access between homes in the neighborhood via sidewalks and trails." And that's good. But it goes on, "And to connect to plan future public pedestrian and bicycle systems along Wilking Road." There are no plans for pedestrian bicycle systems along this road, and to suggest that anyone should walk or cycle this road is careless and dangerous. In another document, it was stated that the developer was going to build workforce housing and look into access to public transportation. We all know this is not coming to Wilking Road. Continuing up Wilking Road, more of the same, a dense collection of mailboxes and private driveways across from La Jolla Drive, where the developer wants to put a second entrance onto Wilking Road. You can see these mailboxes have taken a pretty good beating over the years. This is not the place for a second entrance. Again, there is no room for a left-hand turn lane or right turn shoulders. Again, more of the same further up. Notice on the right, the landowner is selling four large lots with, that are deeper and wide, and is appropriate for this road and the zoning of this corridor. I should mention that many use Wilking Road as a cut-through to avoid construction taking place on Route 24 and Robinsonville Road. The speeding and added traffic is a concern for everyone living along this narrow corridor. Note the canopy of trees shading the roadway, making it difficult to see any daring pedestrians or cyclists, as well as those retrieving their mail and families waiting for school buses. buses. At night, there are no street signs. This is a dark road dotted with reflectors installed by homeowners, hoping it will help drivers navigate past their mailboxes. Further up, much more of the same, mailboxes along the side of the road, approaching the bend of the road, and then this is just beyond the bend, more of the same. This family, across from where Wilking Road intersects with Kendale Road, has had trouble with people driving through the stop or missing the turn, again due to speeding, the narrow turning radius here, and necessary jackrabbit starts to get across safely. And speaking of Kendale, here is the backup that occurs every morning and evening on either end of this road, which connects Beaver Dam to Robinsonville. Making a left-hand turn from Wilking onto Kendale requires a kind person to let us out, hopefully when no one is approaching from the left, or as I said, a jackrabbit start. What I have shown you is not accounted for in the analysis provided by DELL dot. It is up to surrounding community members to make this known to you. That is why we are here. The Commission must use its legal and authoritative discretion. The Wilking Road corridor is not suitable for a cluster subdivision whose only entrance is on this road. We know of no other cluster subdivision that uses the GR zone as its sole entrance and exit, and we are asking that you not set this precedent. Despite the developer's best attempt to state that this plan meets Code 99-9C, it does not. 99C, number one, it does not integrate into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape, nor any other use along this corridor. Allowing a cluster subdivision to use the GR zone as a sole access sets a bad precedent. 99-9C, number 11, this plan does not provide for, quote, "safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and two adjacent ways." Please deny this application. Wilking Road has a long history of flooding because the water table is high and the drainage is poor at best. Such was the case with the Robinson versus Oakwood Village lawsuit within an eighth mile of this site and located on Wilking Road. After the trees were clear-cut, they built up the site with six feet of fill. Water flooded the lower Robinson property, as low as 17 feet above sea level, through upwelling. That's when water filters out of the stormwater pond to the substrata, which is sand. When water reaches the sand beneath the clay, it moves horizontally until it finds a lower area and then wells up to seek equilibrium, creating groundwater upwelling. About 50% of the flooding onto the Robinson property was groundwater upwelling. However, fortunately, the other 50% was visible surface runoff. Had this not been the case, they could not have successfully litigated their case. Wilking Station elevation is 24 to 26 feet. Oakcrest Farms has an elevation of about 35 feet. Oakwood Village elevation is 26 feet, and their ponds are at the water table. The Oakcrest Farms ponds during Hurricane Sandy flooded the Digdon Farm, which is behind Wilking Station and Wilking Station property, creating a stream that was four feet deep and 40 feet wide, which then drained onto the Wilking property. The Sussex Conservation District partially corrected this by installing a pump, but it can only handle a 10-year flood. Thus, the remarkable flooding we now see in the area, and Janet Lettigable did a good job showing in her pictures. And I think I have one. This is pretty standard. If Wilking Station backfills higher than the neighboring properties and its stormwater ponds are higher than the surrounding properties, including Oakcrest Farms and Oakwood Village, upwelling and flooding will occur. This area is populated with what Assistant Chancery Judge Sam Glasscock referred to as "whale wallows," wetland depressions that are at the water table level and therefore frequently flood, including Wilking Station. The Wilking Corridor is notorious for whale wallows and flooding. Mr. Wheatley, I know you say it is illegal for a landowner or a developer to channel water onto someone else's property, but by its nature, upwelling cannot be litigated, and developers and their engineers know this. There are many residents in this county who ask, "Why is my yard flooding? Why is my sump pump running more frequently?" The answer is area upwelling due to new development. If Wilking Station is allowed to be built and filled, it will result in substantial flooding of Wilking Road, which already occurs and will block access to the Wilking Station during heavy storms. There are ways to prevent this. Do not allow clear cutting of trees, which take up more water than any stormwater pond ever will, and do not allow the backfill raising these stormwater ponds above the elevation of their neighbors. And where are the outfalls for these ponds going to go? 100-year storms are more frequent. Another concern for this low area, there was a hazardous waste facility about a half-mile on Doramin Road, which is a higher elevation than Wilking Station. Also, even though Oakcrest Farms and Chapel Green went to public septic this year, their leach fields will leach contaminants for some time. Again, keep in mind, Wilking Station is a low-lying area. If construction is permitted, the soil should be closely monitored for carcinogens and hazardous waste. For the health, safety, and welfare of the residents who already live on or are raising their families along Wilking Corridor, this subdivision in its proposed state needs to be denied. Wilking, by the very nature of this corridor, was never meant to handle this proposed added liability of traffic and flooding. The conditions have only worsened in the last two years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, sir. I'm going to ask you, come on up. Now, we've heard about traffic, we've heard about flooding. If you're going to tell us something different, we'd be delighted to hear from you, but if you start on traffic and flooding, I'm probably going to interrupt you.
Okay. Well, I think I'm pretty safe then, Mr. Wheatley.
Good.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dave Trinuta, and I live at 26 Ancient Oak Drive, approximately 1.1 miles from the proposed site. Thank you for allowing me this time before the Commission. If you recall from the applicant's first application, an initial site assessment determined the presence of antimony on the property. Specifically on page 199 of the paperless PDF file, the applicant's environmental scientist stated that antimony was found in a composite soil sample in the amount of 4.33 milligrams per kilogram, which exceeds DENREX's limit for this element. A sample map was also offered on page 205, and this PDF showed the contaminated soil boring location in the northwestern section of the property. It was designated as sample number three. The National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, also known as NIOH, offers the following on the presence of antimony. Antimony can be harmful to the eyes and skin. Any antimony can also cause problems with the lungs, heart, and stomach. Workers may be harmed from exposure to antimony and its compounds. The level of exposure depends upon the dose, duration, and work being done. In short, it is dangerous to humans. After a review of the current application, I found no mention of any remediation efforts regarding the antimony contamination. The original report stated that additional testing would be completed to determine the full extent of the contamination, and verification testing would be completed after the remediation in efforts to ensure an antimony-free environment. This could be found on page 200. My main concern is that the groundwater table has been contaminated after numerous years of leaching at the site. This extensive leaching can create a three-dimensional subsurface pollution plume with the extents and depth based upon the availability of the source. The longer the condition exists, the worse the extent of the contamination, as rain becomes groundwater and disperses the contaminant. In the interest of safety to the workers, nearby residents, and future homeowners in the subdivision, it is my opinion that DENREX should be alerted about this situation so that they can determine if any remediation was conducted and if the affected area was successful in making this area safe for future development. Thank you for allowing me this time before the Commission.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hutt, would you mind coming up and...
Well, so, and I'll answer this. There was a reference in the record. There is, that page, well, it was just submitted, July 25, 2023. There is a letter from Watershed Eco that says that there was sampling done. It looks like additional soil samples were taken on June 7, 2023, and it says laboratory analysis was again conducted by Mid-Atlantic Environmental Laboratories, and it goes through and describes those. And it looks like additional soil removal in those areas was taken on July 17, and then they did a subsequent soil analysis. And they say, "Based on the laboratory analysis, no antimony was found in the samples, and only low levels of arsenic remained in the soils, which were determined to be below the HSCA screening levels." Not taking possession one way or another, but that's a document, it's in a record, and it's a fairly recent one that was uploaded. That's why I just sort of wanted to point that out, because not everybody might have seen it, depending on what was uploaded.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to ask.
Right.
And that's probably information that you weren't aware existed.
Well, that's true, but, you know, then the question becomes, at what depth were these samples taken? How much soil was removed?
Well, I'll tell you what...
And there are groundwater considerations here, that that's what I'm trying to bring forth here to the Commission, okay?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutt, did you enter your findings into the record? Is there a report? Sir, would you take a seat, please?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you. That report was entered into the record, is that correct?
It was, and as was just indicated by Mr. Robertson, it was entered into the record or the planning commission's online docket yesterday, and that's because we just got that second set of sampling and testing done.
Which is entirely understandable that the gentleman might not have had, might not have seen it, so, but you just gave him a copy of it, is that correct?
Correct, and that is my last paper copy I have on me, so...
Okay, well, it's in the record, but I just wanted to make sure he got one, because he has a legitimate concern, needs to be answered. Yes, sir, come on up. Okay, no antimony, no traffic, no flooding. Okay, something different.
Pictures?
Okay, hand them up to our director down here, and he'll see if we can look at them.
And when we say that, I don't want the public to get the wrong impression. It's sort of what I mentioned at the very beginning of the...
Uh, please, I'm here.
Oops, sir, just a second. How this works is, you know...
I'm having trouble with the parcel.
Okay, but I tell you, sir...
A parcel within...
Wait, wait, sir, sir. Just a second.
George Herschel.
No, no, no. George Herschel, just a second. Just hang on, just for a second. Let him finish what he was saying, okay?
It's one of those nights. So when we say that, you know, we don't need any more testimony about traffic, or the environment, or trees, or the antimony, that doesn't mean in any way, shape, or form that that's not relevant. I don't want anybody to get that misimpression, because there's a lot of information in the record, both in written documentation. Now, we've got the petition, we've got a lot of additional paper information that will be uploaded also. But as I said at the beginning, it's not the quantity of the testimony, it's the quality of it. So I don't want anybody to think that because we don't want to hear anything more about it, that that's somehow diminished the importance of it. That is most certainly not the case. Just if somebody says the same thing twice, that doesn't make it twice as important.
Right.
You know, Dennis Schroeder used to do this, used to say, you know, we all know it's Thursday. If two people come up and say it's Thursday, that doesn't make it any more of a Thursday than it was in the first place. It's the same thing with the testimony. So anyhow, I just wanted to point that out, so nobody thinks that we're trying to diminish the importance of what's being said. So, thank you. Now, you have the floor, sir.
Well, actually, I'm having trouble with artificial intelligence, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm down on Wilking Road, looking for the benchmark for the entrance. I was there an hour, I never found the benchmark. It's .88 from the road.
Right.
Rode my pickup, it's a busy road, tough to park, but I did it and never found it, never found the benchmark. As far as documents, well, it's been put through, what, this is the third time it's been tried, and seems like the documents change every time.
Well, they would, because it's a different application every time.
Okay.
So it would be different.
Well, there's different sales and things, let's say the Harmon, the Harmon's and a couple other ones. I just couldn't get a grip on it. And I'm worried, I don't think it'll ever go through. I mean, heck, it's impossible to put in development there. The, what I'm thinking is, with the TIS picture in the Henlopen Transportation District, and something else recently adopted by DELL dot in Sussex County, they may be marching forward somewhere else, and I'm worried on that, considering it's pretty easy to change the number from 238 to 2288. And that's the road number of, that's the road number of Wilking Road, 288. And 238 runs right behind me. And they've been by a couple different times with flags and whatnot surveying. DELL dot's put all behind me.
Okay.
So it's, the artificial intelligence is really, I mean, I've been through, what, six telephones, no internet, no email, but that's a different story. I'm not going to get into it, it doesn't have anything to do with your application.
Correct.
I wish the people on Wilking Road the best.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, in the lavender.
I'll be brief. Hopefully you won't interrupt me. My name is Susan Petzey Rosenblum. I live on Aintree Drive in Lewis. And I oppose this development for several reasons, some of which echo the concerns of others, especially with respect to the road conditions. I drive up and down Wilking Road every day, getting to and from my house, and I'm very cautious about navigating down the road. In fact, I often go below the speed limit because I'm afraid of obstructions, in particular wildlife and domestic cats that cross the road. And...
Nobody's mentioned cats, yes, sir.
There are, the residents have cats, outdoor cats, and they cross the road. There's a number of times when it was very close, and I've got the speed demons on my back, and they don't want to be on my back when I'm going to stop for an animal, because then everybody's going to get injured. But another strong objection I have is the number of trees that will be cut down. And I just want to mention the county code under Section 115-25F3A1. The code states that, quote, "Homes shall be clustered on the environmentally suitable portions of the tract, specifically those portions of the tract least encumbered by sensitive environmental features, including mature woodlands." The preliminary site plan for this application includes the removal of 15 of the 22 acres of existing forest, 65% of the trees, which is in complete disregard to the section of the county code I just mentioned. Cutting down the existing forest and then claiming to support the environment by planting saplings and creating man-made ponds will not mitigate the damage. And I also read in the PLUS report prepared by the state for this proposed development, experts from DENREX note on page eight that, quote, "An analysis of historical data indicates that the forest area located on the northern portion of the site has likely maintained some degree of forest cover since 1937," unquote. And then continuing on page nine of the PLUS review, experts from DENREX Wildlife Conservation and Research Program state that the mature forest located at the northern portion of the site, again, provides a connection route for wildlife migration between forested lands within the Delaware Ecological Network, which is a network made of interconnecting areas within the Delaware Ecological Network, which is a network made of interconnecting areas with significant ecological value, and that forest disturbances on this site could jeopardize habitat beyond the parcel boundary, and removal of such forested areas should be avoided to the greatest extent possible. The wildlife and the trees are running out of places to thrive in Sussex County. And, and I understand that forest preservation is one of the initiatives that you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the county council are currently working on, which is great. I think that's just great. But in the meantime, there are sections of the county code, such as the one that I mentioned before, that can be applied in order to restrict the clear-cutting of forested properties, such as this one. I hope you've already recognized this and will agree with me that this is just not the right location for a development of this kind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, who's next? Okay, going once. Okay, twice. No. No. One trip to a customer. One trip to a customer.
She's been here enough that she knows the rules.
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, commissioners, any questions, comments? There being none. I would point out to you folks, though, that you seem to have somebody in your midst that has a way with Del Dot. You should have him call and ask him to have those road improvements made. I think they'll be out there next week. So, that was really amazing. But thank you all, you've been very patient and cooperative. We appreciate that. Your comments are important to us. As our, our councillor reiterated just a minute ago, we will take them under consideration. And with that, we will close the public hearing. We'll remind, we'll invite you to remain with us for the rest of the evening to see if we make a decision. We only have four more hearings, and then we'll be referring back to yours. So, or you may just wish to call the office tomorrow and see if we took any action, okay? Thank you. All right. Commission?